preamble of the meeting unless we get some folks that may want to partake in some public input, so I will reserve the right to maybe go back to the preamble if that changes tonight. So we called order. I know we have some agenda adjustments that we want to do, which is more ordering. So I've made some notes, Andy, you can correct me if I'm wrong. What we'd like to do is move the item under discussion, SAU Building Renovation Capital Improvement Projects, and more specifically, a discussion around the formulation of a committee. We'd like to move that before maybe we get into any of the chair appointments. The other item is board actions on chair appointments. So as part of normal processes, some years ago, we built in policy that chair appointments are, the appointments are made, and then the board will kind of ratify them with an action. So that was built, I think it was about four years ago, we put that into policy. So what we want to do is we want to add that as an item under deliberations. I would prefer that to be the top item because that helps me check the box that I finished organizing the board from last month, unless other folks have objections to that and maybe moving it in a different order. Seeing none, we're not going to take a motion on it. We can just go ahead and agree and then sense of the board and move on. So that will be the order. Andy, are there any other items that I might have missed?
Well, first, I'd like to take a moment and introduce the board, Carol Tyler.
Yes.
Many of you may not know Carol. She is our data guru, everything to do with websites, our state data, all our federal requirements, civil rights background, all of those things that come in some, in some way, for, shape, or form filter through Carol. Carol will be presenting on HB 1612, which is the law enacted last year. My recommendation is to put Carol as the first discussion item, just to move her up before the business so we can allow her to get in and get out.
Okay, let's do that.
Carol, Gina, Rich, and Kelly have been working for about 18 months to bring this forward tonight, and we'll be asking for an action in June. Tonight is just to give you the background, give you the wonderful 45-page document that is required, and just answer any questions you may have so that we can take an informed position in June.
Okay, so we're going to do the presentation first, the formulation of the committee, and then all the other items as it's shown here.
Correct.
Very good. Thank you, and thanks for being with us tonight.
You're welcome.
All right, so that's it for agenda adjustments. We're going to move straight to approval of the meeting minutes.
I move to approve the meeting minutes of, oh my God, I lost my thing, of the, today of May, of April, was it 3rd, 2019, minutes of the hall schedule.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Discussions around the changes, if any?
There it is.
Do we have changes?
The following amendments were offered. Sorry about that, folks, I finally found it. Page three, line 43, replace Wildcat with Wildcard. Page four, line six, delete Officer following, delete Officer following parenthetical SRO. And page 10, line 35, capitalize primary. And those are the amendments associated with the motion to approve the minutes as a matter of.
Any other changes? Seeing none, all in favor? Five zero zero.
And there are apparently no other minutes.
Okay.
Do you have a second?
Yes. You're all set. So we're moving on to nominations, resignations, and correspondence.
And we have no nominations, resignations, or correspondence type, which is great.
We're zipping along, we're zipping along. That's just a draft of board goals.
Do you want me to hand this to someone?
Well, Andy and you, and anyone else who wants, I have extra if you guys want to see them, just to make sure everybody has them, pass the rest down.
Okay.
All right.
Good, sorry.
Principal reports.
Yeah, I just want to highlight a couple of things. The principals' reports in your packet, as it is on a monthly basis. Those at home may be watching tonight, I wanted to highlight that the, today, tomorrow, and Friday are new kindergarten and first grade student screening, so those families are starting their process with us. Our enrollment continues to be steady, not much changes either way. At Hughes, over vacation, we started the installation of the CAD6 cabling in a number of areas, so we're excited about that. And we are preparing to do some fencing and more signage up there. And then we did a deep cleaning in both our buildings, as you may be aware, before we left for vacation, we were starting to see an uptick in stomach viruses and things like that. So we take this opportunity of vacation to really go through and kind of hopefully eliminate that for the year. So hopefully that's behind us. All the faucets at the two buildings underwent the new state testing requirement, where we had to take a water sample from every single faucet in both buildings. Those were packed up and sent out. We did that across the SAU. For those who may not be aware, our water is tested on a monthly basis anyways, but this was the new law requiring the mandate for lead testing. So that has been done. I'd like to thank Kelly for coordinating all that and working with our custodians, who did just a tremendous job. The interviewing for kindergarten and environmental science is starting up as we speak, so those positions next month, you'll probably get a recommendation from me for the hires. I also want to draw your attention to Penny Karia, Jennifer Goldway, Paula Isbicky, and Sarah Prue will be presenting at the New Hampshire School Principals Association in June, empowering your school community, small changes, tremendous impact. This is a great group of educators who are taking many of the things that we do here on a daily basis and sharing it with the rest of the state of New Hampshire, so I'd like to commend them and thank them. Also, as some of you know, Jennifer LaRoche is coming into Jamie God's room, as Jamie will be out on maternity leave, so that transition. And then at Hughes, teachers Betsy Keegan and Samantha Boudreau, along with Candy Fala, have had their learning walks, proposal accepted by the Learning Forward Professional Organization. They'll be presenting to their peers in December of 2019. So we're really excited about that. And also Karen Kelly will be presenting actually in June on the flex grouping model that they have here at Hughes. So a lot of exciting things going on in both buildings. We're gearing up for the transition of our sixth graders to the co-op school district and the welcoming of new preschool and kindergarten students, so it's always a fun time, but a hectic time.
Yeah, sure.
If there's any questions on the principals' reports, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
I had a question on enrollment. How, what's the outlook, how are we doing generally?
Overall, I would say what the grade we're watching the most closely is kindergarten. Trying to really determine if we're going to need that extra section, which is kind of watching the move-ins and the move-outs right now. Because one of the things from the NESDAQ predictions, it's a little different, they're traditionally used to adding, say, a dozen bodies because we used to have some private kindergartens, those both closed, so we believe we're closer to our total number, which may mean that we may not need that extra section that was budgeted. So we're watching that. Everything else is on target, and we should easily remain under our educational specs unless something changed drastically during the summer. If we did see that change, we would do the same strategy we did this year, we'd go to the budget committee and the school board and recommend using the contingency fund to hire a teacher to keep the class sizes where the community expects them.
I noticed we kind of changed format to the, on the enrollment table here. There was a time where we used to, there was more breakout on the ed specs and the distribution of students across the sections, and I just wanted to kind of put it out there. I don't know necessarily the what.
This has always been the format for the principals' reports, but you always supplied a second, more elaborate chart.
Detail.
It was colors, and it had specs, and it had.
It was very useful, I think.
We have to have that back, if it's not impossible to get it back.
Would that create any issues?
I don't see there's a problem, I think it was just more that the, the meeting was so close to vacation.
I see.
And the principals trying to get everything organized before they left.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, you know, that kind of gets the reports out, but I think at least a few times a year, we'd like to see that detail, just because it really allows, I think, the members to zero in right away where we are per grade and per section, you know, and gives you a sense of where we are. Are we getting really close to, are topping out in our, in our ed specs, or we got plenty of headroom? So that's just some side comment input for you. Any other questions on the principals' reports?
Can you remind me what the learning walks was, because I remember hearing about it, and I can't remember what it was.
The learning walks is.
Was it an outdoor?
No, it more focuses on teacher-to-teacher observations.
Oh, that's right. No, I remember, thank you.
So, you know, four or five of us could get together, and we would do a learning walk, and we'd go through and observe other teachers' classrooms, and maybe take some of their strategies, ask critical questions of why do you do that? So it really helps teachers grow professionally.
Okay.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to get ready, and to, well, we have our public opinion input section, and I'm getting the wave off there. So if we get an unprecedented influx of people from the community, perhaps we would go back and consider a public input session. Since that is the case, we'll go ahead and move to our discussion section and our data presentation.
Sure, I'll turn it over to Carol.
Great, thank you. Rich is going to run the projector, I guess not projector, but.
Would you like to swing around?
Yeah, we'll swing around.
Whatever's easiest.
Thank you. And I'll just start again by introducing myself. I'm Carol Tyler, and I'm the database manager for the district. So actually, prior to this law going into place, I, the database manager position was created at the same time that Gina Burksky came on board as assistant superintendent. And at that time, when we both came on with new positions, we started looking at data and student privacy before we even knew there was a law. So I'm going to just go over the process that actually started in 2016, and a lot of our work actually was done before the law, and the law just kind of sped up our timeline. So the, this law was put in place last June, and it needs to be, everything needs to be complete, especially the data governance plan by June 30th of this year, and that's why we're presenting now. So I'm just going to go over some points of the new law and let you know where we are. So like I said, we started data cleanup basically back in the summer of 2016, and what we really looked at is every piece of data and software, mostly software that held student data with personally identifiable, personally identifiable information. So we looked at those pieces of software, both licensed and unlicensed, and who had access to that software and what the roles looked like. So we made a list of every piece of software, both, you know, student-based and employee-based, and looked at permissions, who had access to what, and we narrowed those down. So our first year, we kind of looked at every, every person's role, and then removed access based on if they were paraprofessional, or if they were a teacher, or if they were secretary. So we honed in on those roles. We also reviewed our acceptable use agreement that normally went to students, and we expanded it to all staff. So that was another process that was completed. Once that was done, we prepared an inventory, like I mentioned, of every piece of software, and I'm talking free tool or website, something that a teacher may go in the classroom and think that they wanted to work on, like a bridge project. If they wanted to use that piece of software, we asked them to list it in an inventory. So we did our school databases, our library databases, Chrome extensions, you name it, it was on the list. So then we sent that list to every staff member, asked them to, yeah, yeah. So part of the law is creating that inventory. So we created that inventory. You can go one more. And there we go. Okay, so we created an inventory of every piece of software we thought might be used. The staff then reviewed the list and determined if they used it or not, what grade levels used it, and which districts used it. On those pieces of software, we wanted the name of the site, the description, the actual URL, and the privacy statement and the terms of use. That took the following year. So we collected that data from about this time last year until June, when the school got out. So that was our starting point for that inventory that's now required by law. Once we got that list together, we, we created a rubric to determine if we wanted to continue using that piece of software, or if we thought it didn't meet our student privacy standards. So basically, that's some of the things we looked at, was it, did it have targeted, if it was free, did it have targeted advertising? Was there a cost to the software? Were we going to fund that cost? What, did it enhance the curriculum, or was it a distraction with ads? Did it require student login? If so, what kind of student login, and how are we going to protect students from giving out first names, last names, date of birth, that sort of information? So that was all part of our rubric for vetting each and every site. So that is exactly what we did. We went through that list, vetted every site, read every single privacy policy on every single site that was submitted. So once we did that, we also put protocols in place. What was it going to look like if we did approve a site and student information was going to be uploaded? So we determined a protocol for, so a student wouldn't enter their actual first name and last name. We would use a student ID number as a last name if possible. We would limit any grade-specific information that was, we didn't feel should be uploaded to a site. We just wouldn't allow it. Then we also determined who was going to upload that student information. Did we want a teacher uploading it, or were we going to really hone it down and just have specific people uploading that information? And that is what we decided to do. And then we also looked at sites that had explicit parent permission. What, a good example of that is there's a Desmos calculator that is an online calculator for math and algebra-related functions, and it's, the privacy statement is for no students under 13. Well, one of the middle school teachers wanted to use it, and we gave it an approval to be used, but we had every single parent sign off that they could, the student could or could not use it. So that's just an example of how we put those expressed parent permissions in place. So once we did determine all that, we needed to communicate our practices. So the very next thing we did was we conducted cloud privacy training for all our teachers before they left at the end of last year. And we went to every district and, yes, completed the training, and some of the things we talked about were 13-plus guidelines, privacy pledges from vendors, that's another thing that we looked at that we could determine that a website was probably okay to be used. Other guidelines we talked about were teachers not uploading student names, first names, last names to websites. We talked about temporary tools that could be used in the classroom that didn't require logins. I think that's about everything we went over. The other piece that we did is, once we had that list of every piece of software that was used, we wanted to make it available for teachers to be able to find new sites to use, so we created a technology request form. Any new site that wasn't on the list or had been vetted because it didn't have enough information, now we have a new Google form that teachers complete. We meet weekly, we look at that site, we vet it, and then it's an ongoing process for us to get back to teachers, whether that site's approved or not. And like I said, that's an ongoing process. That's, our technology team meets once a week, and we look at every site that's submitted. All right, the next piece was about, of the law is about policies and procedures for, it's so far away. Thank you. For access to data and permissions. So, thanks.
Could you just use my?
Oh, thank you. So the next piece is about those policies and permissions, how are we going to make that public? So, next slide. So we created pages on our website under information technology. You can go next, one more. And we created a Toots Technology and Student Privacy page, includes our practices right now, and then also has links to that software list I referred to, our acceptable use agreement, and then other student privacy sites that would be helpful to parents. We want to complete transparency. So parents, community, everyone now has our district software list of every site that's been vetted and approved. At the bottom, there are tabs for our licensed software, our unlicensed, our library databases, our Chrome extensions, et cetera. You can look at that anytime. And then the very last piece of the data governance plan, and probably the most comprehensive, is that we create, had to create, of the law is that we have to create a data governance plan, and that's that 44-page document that you received and I'm sure read every word of. So our technology team has now developed and transformed into our data governance team, and that's Rich, myself, Kelly, and Gina. Basically, we had to look at the purpose and intent of our data governance plan and then develop, then write it. Some of the main parts of the plan that I just wanted to share with you is, first of all, just identifying potential need for our data lifecycle and security. So we're constantly having, you were just talking about new kindergarten enrollment, we're just constantly bringing in new students, their data, what happens to that data? How long do we hold on to it? When the student is, you know, seven years gone, that data's still going to live on a server somewhere. So we had to come up with plans of how to store that data, how long, and then if we have data on any internal servers here, I think we, is there a lunch software or any software?
Chair.
Yeah, our lunch software is housed on a server here. How long do we keep that? When those servers are too old, how do we scrub them, recycle them, remove them, and preserve that data, or make sure it's not there anymore? So that's something that is in the data governance plan. We also need to perform a risks assessment and external audit, so that's both a network audit and a security audit. One would look at the hardware, and the other one would look at everything from a teacher logging in, using a password, to students logging in, just comprehensive. The other piece is just the ongoing, every, the ongoing software and how we manage that. Let me see if there's anything else. So that's everything that we've pretty much covered, and then the other piece is then, if, if in the worst-case scenario there was a data breach, how, this is part of our governance plan, how, what would that look like? What happens when a breach happens or a spill would happen? And we developed a response, incident response plan that has business continuity, data recovery, external and internal response plan, and then communicating that to either the people involved or the community, whichever is necessary. So that, we wrote the response plan, but we haven't put all the pieces in, complete, so that's something you're going to want to look at. And then the last issue is, we still have policy work to do at every district. The policies listed here, we don't have, and we need to look at and then adopt, and they're listed here. The next steps, like I said, is we need to complete a network audit and a security audit, and find funding for those. They are not free, and it's, they should not be done internally, and the same company should not do both of them, because it would be a conflict of interests. Our ongoing work forever and ever is vetting new sites, reviewing our existing policies, and then just, again, looking at data retention and storage. And that's where we are. Are there questions?
Nice work, that is a huge undertaking.
Thank you.
It's incredible.
It was, it was fortunate that we actually started earlier, not knowing the law was coming, just knowing that we had an opportunity to start putting structure in place to something that never existed before. And we were behind this, other districts as far as that was concerned, but we caught it pretty quickly once Gina came on board, and then the database manager position was created.
I have a question.
Sure.
Is there documented public school data breaches that have happened that have been analyzed?
Yes, there's been at least four.
In New Hampshire.
Yes, in New Hampshire alone.
Yeah, and Montana, wasn't there one with security cameras somehow?
Yeah, there's been four.
It was just recent, I seem to recall that one.
There was a data breach about two years ago in New Hampshire where it was a ransom situation.
Yeah, there was one in Concord.
There've been ransomware ones, for sure.
Yeah, there's been at least four in recent years. I think Concord School District was one of them.
Okay. I was just wondering what was learned from the data breach that was then, you know?
Rich and I are actually going to a conference tomorrow on data security, and I think that's being discussed, yeah.
And so, and this is like one of the things we're in the process of doing, is reviewing all of the cameras, the security cameras, because, you know, just years past, they were the Chinese cameras that had the back door for the government to hack into. And so, at the Hughes, part of what we've done up there is we've replaced them all with American access cameras, and they are far more secure for just any hacking situations.
And a lot, a lot of those peripherals within the network, like a camera or some other even sensor, can be used as a, as a way for a hacker to get into the network. So, you know, we have to, when we think about even the most rudimentary element that we tack on to the, to the network, there's an element, we always got to think from a security perspective, is there a way that somebody could get into that remotely and then gain access into the, into the network? Or be able to get some nugget of information that gets them a step further into the network, right? And cameras were, like you said, was a big, was a big one.
Yeah, yeah, I know federal government has identified particular brands that we shouldn't be using, and so we're working towards taking care of that. And we're also getting more sophisticated with VLAN, so cameras are on different VLANs than the production network.
Yeah. So I have a few questions, this is kind of close, close to my heart here.
Yeah.
So when you think about stuff from a standpoint of bringing your own devices and the software that's on those devices, that device is accessing our network, they're a trusted device, and, but the software may not be. Any freeware or anything that staff might download in the course of a day that may or may not be friendly? I mean, what, what things might we want to be thinking about from that standpoint? And how do we even begin to manage that, or that's something we need to look into?
Well, if you are bringing a personal device on any network in SAU 41, you are on a guest VLAN, which is totally encapsulated from the production network.
Okay.
So does that mean somebody could possibly impact everybody else on that guest network? That's possible, but it is at a, at your own risk, like if you go to Panera Bread.
Yeah.
It's the same deal. So, and I'm very aggressive, if I see anybody's personal device on the production network, I block it.
Yeah, yeah.
And I block it with a MAC address on the switches, and that prompts a phone call and a conversation.
I don't know!
Everybody knows that that's what I do.
Yeah, so the practice is that there are, that the user isn't able to get into the production network unless they've bypassed it somehow. But the standard is that you, even if you downloaded something, you're not on our network, you're on the guest network.
And we're also with the high school and middle school, it's all radius server authentication, so there is no way a personal device can get on the, on the production network.
Okay.
If your device is not in active directory, it just can't do it.
It doesn't, it doesn't.
Right.
It doesn't see you as a trusted device.
Not at all, nope.
I see.
And then, of course, with the, the machine on, that we own, we lock them down very tight with NTFS permissions.
Okay.
And it requires a tech staff member to put software on.
Okay, so that, so we're, we have software governance on trusted devices.
Oh, yeah, and it's all done with active directory, yeah.
The other thing that came to my mind, because this is something that is happening in, in the corporate world, is phishing and doing a lot of training around phishing through email. the corporate world, is phishing and doing a lot of training around phishing through email. And I'm wondering if we do it now or do we plan to do it? Pretty much anybody who's got email and receives email on our network while they're working or otherwise, I mean, reading some of the recent articles, phishing is probably ninety percent of the hacking.
Yes, and that's where the, a couple of those ransomware things that we were just talking about happened through email phishing. So, we did cover that in our training last June.
So, what I, I've seen things do, so we, we've go through a lot of phishing scenarios and, you know, even, even training, you know? I, I wanna make sure that anybody using that, using the network really needs to be sharp about how to identify it, right? If you see like a, you never click on a link in an email.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Particularly if the link and what they're asking for doesn't match the email address, right? And all those things, and it's very easy to miss.
Google is pretty good with their spam filters. We also have the DKIM setup, which is like an encryption key that is on our DNS server, which right now is with Wix. And that way, if you masquerade my name coming in as an email, you don't know that encryption key and it will understand that it's really not me sending the email, that it's somebody spoofing my account.
I mean, we even go to the extent where we create our own phishing traps and we send them out to, we send them out.
Yeah.
And we ask you, if you think it's phishing, report it. And, and when people don't report it and actually click and do stuff, we know, okay, more, we need to train better.
And this would definitely be part of a security audit.
Right.
Yes.
We would ask them and...
So, we, our training that we conducted last June for every staff member, it was mandatory and email was definitely part of our, our training. And that training is gonna be required annually. And we're also looking into some modules, like all of our staff have to do online modules like health and, you know, slips and files. And we reviewed an email phishing module that we're probably gonna incorporate into our training.
I see. So, I, the other thing, a lot of the things I was thinking about, I think your, your presentation addressed for me. I'm kind of a policy-minded person when, when I'm sitting up here. So, I'm wondering about the policies this board needs to consider and what actions we need to take. And I'm also thinking about how we might use those policies and cite our governance draft document, right? 'Cause as almost like a procedure, because that, I, I kinda went through, I didn't read every page, but it's extensive.
Yes.
I mean, and, you know, we wanna build that detail into a higher level of governance, right? So, you know, if, if we're going to be working on policies, we certainly wanna use, maybe even use that document as a procedural document. So, it's kind of a hierarchy of how we build our policies. So, just things to think about as we're going forward.
Yeah, I'm glad you looked at it because we do reference all the policies that were listed on that last page. And those are New Hampshire policies that, that some of the districts just haven't adopted yet.
Right, so we're gonna need to think about adopt, what we need to adopt.
Right.
At a high level. And then downwards, point to our draft specific procedures and things like that.
A lot of it is about data retention. It's all, it's privacy and student privacy specifically.
And do those need to be adopted by that June thirty date as well?
You know, the governance plan?
The governance plan needs to be, that's, that's the law states by June thirtieth, yeah.
Yeah, I really like the idea of the periodic audits and assessments and things like that that should be just built into our best practices and, and operating and running the business. So, I was...
One of my plans for, or my goals for, coming out of tomorrow is to have information on how to write an effective RFP that we can start sending out to the vendors.
Right, right. Would that be, would those, not necessarily RFP, but the procedures about how we audit, how we do the, the, the assessments, is that, do we plan to build that into our draft document or governance document or?
There's a couple schools of thought on that.
Okay.
One is that we don't wanna tell people how we do our procedures because that assists the people that are trying to get in.
Okay.
But that wasn't necessarily thought about when they passed the law. So, there's actually a revision to the law potentially coming out to be able to discuss those things in non-public, as opposed to public where we do most of our business. So, we're looking at the, the best strategies around that. One of the things we have investigated a little bit, if our, we did the RFP through our legal counsel, then there's a confidentiality piece. So, there are, there are some things we're looking at.
Yeah, I can, I can see that there's some structural things from a legal standpoint and what boards are able to do in non-public that may need to be addressed because I see that there may be some techniques and audit periods or whatever that we would prefer to keep out of the public eye.
Right.
Yes.
You don't wanna show your vulnerabilities.
Absolutely, yeah.
I think that's on the way. I think that's been discovered. 'Cause a little bit of a background, remember sixteen twelve was gonna have no cost. This was something that was just gonna make things safer, but no cost. It's taken four administrators eighteen months of time and effort and salary. And it's also going to have the expense of these network audits. So, this is another example where we'll pass something and they'll say it has no cost, but there'll be probably somewhere close to twenty thousand dollars added into each of the budgets across the SAU to fund those audits and tests.
Yeah.
So, it's just...
And I could, I can even see other associated costs beyond just audit and, and assessment.
Right, once the audit was returned, they're gonna have a to-do list.
Yeah, I can, I can almost see a line item in our budget that should be considered as we go through this year is maybe we have the data insecurity, a line item. And, and maybe we have to break that out into several elements, but, you know, that may be something that we, if we don't have it already, that we need to think about, even if we have zero dollars in them, but we're building the placeholders and the framework of what it's gonna take to get this properly, you know, realized and running. So, twenty thousand dollars seems to be like just the start.
Very well could be, yeah.
Almost like an IT contingency.
When you consider the loss that, and exposure of data, data and, and the loss of the data and, and the damages that are, twenty thousand dollars is a drop in the bucket.
Especially if the law is associated.
Very less than we ever wanna do is come to you guys and say, "We have to get a Bitcoin account because we have to pay a fifty thousand dollar ransom."
So, let's, as we go, you know, if we can, let's not forget about this as we're building budgets. Let's think about data and data security and what we need. And it'll start a conversation with the budget committee and we'll go from there. The money is different, but the placeholders are important.
And just so you know, our, our insurance carrier does cover data breaches.
Data breaches and loss.
That's good to know. You don't have to... Can I ask a question? What is a VPN and why do the kids talk about this?
Virtual Private Network.
No, VPNs?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, and you, they're Chrome extensions. And so, what it is, you put a VPN extension in. And what it basically does is it makes a tunnel.
Encrypted tunnel.
Out to another...
Is that something you can block with the most new processes?
Oh, yeah.
Because my son who's a computer fanatic says it's just a common thing in the building.
Yep, we, we're pretty aggressive with it.
Rich continuously is monitoring, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I believe it.
So, we're gonna change our whole philosophy going into next year on extensions. Right now, we block the ones we don't. I'm gonna flip that around. We're gonna block everything and allow the ones we want.
That's, makes sense.
And most schools are, you know, re-changing that whole approach to it. And, yep, and we, you know, you have to kinda look for patterns in the filter.
Yeah, basically, it's a way for anyone, students, whatever, to bypass all the security measures we have in place so that they can't go to the sites that have been blocked.
And of course, I, the, the teachable moment on that is, all of your keystrokes are being captured by somebody else's computer.
Oh, yeah.
Overseas or, who knows where it is.
Right.
And who knows if that will ever come back to, you know, haunt you someday. It's one thing if you have a work VPN versus the freebies that are...
Oh, is that it?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
You can create your own and then make a pipe or whatever you want.
And they're, they're data mining you, basically.
So, I really would like to keep the board close to this stuff. Maybe, maybe in the fall, we should retouch on this topic and, you know, particularly as we get into budget season and things like that. Of course, yeah, from a, I can see a couple of paths here, right? From the policy track, from the budgeting track, things like that. You know, just maybe we revisit this and make sure we're keeping the conversation moving throughout the year.
So, one thing I hear some about is how frustrating it is for students, staff, clubs because of how thick your firewall is, right?
Yeah.
And I always stand up for you.
Probably the only person that does.
Well, no, I, I remember that ransomware that hit. It was like, it wasn't Hennecker, but it was somewhere up there. It was terrible. So, you know, I mean, you must be thinking also about academic impacts, you know, research and...
Yeah, definitely. We were not popular.
Yes, I was trying to think how to phrase that.
We're blocking the buildings.
We, yeah, we take the law very seriously and we are interpreting it, you know, to the letter that we believe is true and that has not been popular. I, we don't want to prevent anyone from being able to teach their curriculum, but at the same time, this is here and it's not going away. And so, we just feel like if we are trying to stay as ahead of it as possible and we put, you know, the, we made the request form, a Google form that teachers can submit any day, we review it once a week. We're not trying to prevent anyone from using the website. We just are trying to, you know, doing our best with the law.
And, yeah, and our filter and firewall, I would describe them as very aggressive.
It's very good.
I have many conversations with superintendent, the assistant superintendent. "What do you think about this?" And it's usually, we take the safety of students. We also have E-rate money, which we state that we will be SIPA compliant and do a best effort to filter and protect our young people and...
And will some of the policy work be around, I hate to use the word punishment, but corrective actions with people who are using their cellular to access forbidden things?
Yeah, that's in the data governance plan, there's...
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Believe me, it took us a long time to go...
It's very impressive, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think we wanna make sure we're building an environment where also if there are incidences that they feel comfortable and they can just say, "Hey, I think I clicked on something I should," you know, or whatever.
Yeah, I get emails like that.
And be able to come forward with an incident without, you know, worrying about, "Oh, am I gonna get in trouble?"
Yeah.
It's like, no, I mean, it was just a simple thing or, you know, you know, just going through your day and then you come across maybe an incident that could expose the security of something. Wanna make sure that we're, making sure that people feel comfortable coming forward.
Yeah, and we will get emails from staff saying, "Does this look right?"
Something doesn't look right, yeah.
And, which is a good thing. And then if there's enough staff, I'll either take an action to block that, of course, the spammers, they always change their email address a little bit, so it's almost impossible to do that. But we'll send out an email to staff from time to time and just say, "This one's going around."
Yeah.
Just click spam if it comes to your inbox and Google usually catches up with it.
Good stuff.
Andy, maybe we can talk about this and maybe opportunities, what would be a good amount of time that passes where we're at a state where we could get, get an update again on this, where we are.
Well, I think this is gonna become one of those documents that is gonna have to be reviewed, you know, at least annually.
Okay.
Between the policies it impacts, the educational environments, the, the changing in the software industry is gonna force us to do this.
Okay.
I think to your point, that's kinda some of the hidden costs that worry me because it, it's not gonna go away and it was established for all the right reasons.
Yes.
It's just, you know, our SAU is typical of many and as a result, we don't necessarily have the IT infrastructure that you would see in a corporate environment.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, a lot of this is training staff and, and I really wanna commend again Gina, Carol, Rich, and Kelly because we now have procedures and that that are becoming part of our daily routine.
Yeah.
And I will assure you that we are quite a ways ahead of pretty much all our colleagues across the state. And again, it was something that we thought we could do internally. We'll have to do the, you know, the two network test externally. But this has been ranging, you know, I talked to a superintendent the other day and they spent forty thousand dollars to get to this point. And it's, and it doesn't go away. So, by creating it internally, at least we have our historical accounts of how we got there, where we're going, and what the next steps are.
That's a good idea. Okay, any other comments, questions on the presentation?
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thanks very much.
You can go. We greatly appreciate it.
It was nice to talk to you.
Thanks, Carol. Thanks very much. Nice presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get into our SAU Bill of Duty and capital improvements discussion. So, some of the things I'm thinking of to kick off this work, yes?
We're doing what? Oh, that's right.
Yeah, we're moving the SAU stuff up to the top. So, there will be a lot of things and a lot of detail and a lot of engagement with subject matter experts as we go into the study that the board just does not have time to delve into. In many situations like this that, that we get into, usually what we like to do is put together a appointed committee that can get into the detail and look at that detail and then advise the board on recommendations, next steps, updates, whatever it is. Because we only get together once a month for two hours. And you could spend four hours a week talking about some of this detail. So, we just, we have a lot of other things that we have to attend to in any one meeting. So, it's gonna be important to form some sort of a committee. Typically, what we like to do is build that committee from a lot of different stakeholders. And the one thing I know that was helpful when we did the H-step work is we kinda generated a charter of that, of that committee. And what I find is, when you write it down and you charge the committee what to do, it's very specific and you avoid a lot of confusion. I've seen other committees formed that doesn't have a charge and they think they are public relations people and they're talking about everything and, and they're taking on all this work. The charter is very focused, very specific. It, it defines who they're working for and who they need to provide work product to, which is us and us alone. They don't have to do, that's the way, why we set them up, is to advise us, not to advise the community or anybody else or so. And, and also we put a timeline in terms of how long this committee's gonna stay together 'cause they're not, they don't stay together forever. And when they hit a certain date or whatever, it's over, the committee closes down. So, I think, we don't wanna make the charter too complicated, a couple pages that kinda, I think we have some...
I think the charter from H-step is really strong about like the purpose of establishing membership.
As a template.
Yeah.
And it kinda calls out membership, why the membership is built, the way it's built, just the wireframe of why the committee's put together.
Clarifies the purpose, the mission.
And anyone from the community can pull the charter and read it. They don't have to come and ask individuals about what it is and get five different answers. So, with that, I'll kinda just put it there and look for comments or questions about that.
Makes sense to me. You'd think that any committee should be, should have a formal charter that's a public document that states the mission and also, you know, who the authorities are and aren't. And like you said, start and end date.
Yeah, yeah.
Purpose, reporting, who it reports to.
And their work product, right? What they're gonna, what they're gonna generate.
To the degree as possible, yeah.
Okay. So, so, what we'll need to do, the charter will probably drive most of the details around this, right? So, we can today, or tonight, we can kind of agree at the direction we're going and probably by our next meeting, we'll have, you know, the wireframe put together, maybe even some candidates that would be on, on the committee. Usually, we'd like to have somebody appointed from, from the board, which you'll hear more about shortly tonight, but other stakeholders. about shortly tonight, but other stakeholders like Budget Committee and so forth, we might, and maybe other community members, there's several ways we can go about it. But by, let's say, by the next meeting in June, we should have some rough draft of what the, what the charter will be and then at some point, we should take an action to approve it and then make it live and actionable. So, that's kind of the way I see this going, Andy. What you're feeling on that, am I missing anything? Should we be considering anything else?
I think looking at the H-step model would work very well again. I think for the new board members, the facilities committee, after it's formed, after our meetings, would provide regular email updates so that the board received every email in the minutes along with the Budget Committee. So, as a member of the board, you didn't feel like you didn't know what was going on, you know, and if you had a question, you could email back to the person who provides the minutes and then we could take that up at our next committee. So, I think that's the other piece of wanting everybody to feel like as we went through this 10-month process, that had, everybody had input and then what we do formally is multiple times throughout the process, we'd come back to the board and give you updates. And really, the timeline is pretty set because we want all of our material done for the public hearing in February.
In February.
So that by March meeting, we've got a presentation, we've got the rationale of everything we're doing. So, it's not like this never-ending discussion, it's a very, it's very quick. And at the same time, that's going on, on the facility side, the board is getting updates from the member of the board who's on the board and the Budget Committee's getting updates from the person who's on the Budget Committee, but everybody's getting the same emails. And it was really helpful when we went through, I'll say, examples of like delays, because maybe H-step something hadn't come in on time, then we had probably close to 25 or 30 representative in the community that had firsthand knowledge to answer the question as opposed to, I'm not sure what's going on. So, I would say that model, and I think, once we form the committee, we can at least bring the draft to June.
Yes.
I would say we'll do our due diligence to approve it in June, because traditionally we don't meet in July.
Right.
So...
So, I would say even if it's at the 80% done level, we should be able to still go ahead and say, we're good with, at where it's at right now. We reserve the right to tweak it if we feel the need to down the road, but, you know, we're going to make sure that there's a good reason for it if we have to. But I don't want to run the clock out, front-loading this work, right? Because we could spend three or three months just looking at the, at the charter and approve it in September, that's too late. We need to get this thing kind of built, the 80% level, at least be able to formulate the committee. If we're still...
There'll be a ton of work this summer on the project.
Right, so we really have to get this thing going, because a lot of the bulk of the work is going to be going on probably from June on. So, that's where I see this going. So, I think what we'll do is we'll, we'll be doing a lot of homework in getting something ready for the board to see very, at our next meeting. And it should be, you know, pretty high-level finish percentage. But I don't want to make it too parliamentary and eat up another month or two to get it going. So, anyway, if that's it, any other comments or anything, any concerns at this point?
So, who is, you're drafting the charter?
Uh, no.
Who's drafting the charter?
It's coming, it's coming.
He's got his recommendations on.
I got the whole recommendation, so I'm coming. So, all right, then we'll go ahead and move on and thank you, Dawn.
That's what I meant, that was meant to the transition.
Not the secretary.
Segue. Thanks for Dawn, that's why we had our agenda adjustments, just because you really want to talk about this before you like do other things, so we went ahead and did that. So, okay, we have committee appointments, so I can go ahead. I normally just send this in to be written in the minutes, just so there's a document there and there's a piece of paper behind all this. So, to Hollis School Board and Andrew Corey, Superintendent, SAU 41, from Robert W. Mann, Hollis School District Chair, subject is Hollis School District Board Appointments. Dear Superintendent Corey and Hollis School Board, I am providing this correspondence to be read into the public record, bringing forward my board appointments for the coming year. Over the last month, I took time to reach out to each of the board members to understand their interests, passions, and talents and how best to thoughtfully align those passions to needed roles. In accordance with Policy BDE, BDF, and BBA, I am submitting these appointments for board consideration and approval tonight. Upon approval, individuals in these roles will be empowered to faithfully carry out the respective functions in the best interest of our school district and as assigned agents of the school board. I hereby appoint Tammy Farid, our Vice Chair, to Hollis School District Representative to SAU Office Study Committee. Also, Hollis School District Representative to Budget Committee as the alternate member. Brooke Arthur, our Board Secretary, I'm assigning the Hollis School District signer, approver of the manifest. Amy Kellner to Hollis School District Policy Committee. Hollis School District Representative to SAU 41 Governing Board Policy Committee and also the Hollis District Representative to SAU Budget Committee. Carolyn Roy to the Hollis School District signer and approver of the manifest. Hollis School District Representative to the Hollis Budget Committee, the primary member, and also the Hollis School District Representative to SAU 41 Governing Board Policy Committee as our alternate. I am also putting myself as the Hollis School District Representative to the SAU Study Committee as an advisory role member. These are very exciting times for the Hollis School District. I want to thank each of you for stepping up to fill these critical roles and responsibilities respectfully submitted. Robert Mann, Hollis School Board Chairman. All right, so I hope that answers your question. Who's going to?
I'm just going to copy paste from H-step.
That's fine, whatever it takes. Any questions or anything that we need to talk about on these? I mean, I've just spoken to each one of you?
Just in terms of manifest signing, as I've mentioned to most people, the first week of each month is the kind of the best time, just put it in your calendar, to kind of sign everything from the previous month. And it basically starts with the things that are starting now in terms of AP. So, you'll be getting an email from our AP specialist, Amanda, and when you get that, the first email is really to approve, to let us release the checks. So, you get a draft of who we're paying and the amount, and then, once a month, you'll need to come in and actually sign the manifest. And when you guys do come in, just tell Jackie, who's our front desk person, that you're there and I will come down and explain everything.
We don't need to come together.
You don't need to come together.
What she just said is you get a PDF, that's the summary of all the checks, what they're for and how much they are. And they need your approval by email immediately, to the degree that you can, so that they can send those checks out. Once a month, they need you to go in and sign all those things in person and you'll see all the actual invoice, all the billings are stapled together with some of that summary and you can sit there and take all the notes you want or none, whatever you choose to do to study it and that, that formalizes the authorizations that you did by email.
And if you have questions, you can reach out to any one of us.
It takes two of the board, each board has to have...
So, we'll take two signatures on each thing.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, you need two sets of eyes from a board, so it's not just one person.
You'll learn a lot, it's interesting.
Yeah, and certainly, we've all done it, so if you have questions, you can shoot an email to any one of us.
Like how much ice cream we buy.
New people, have fun.
So, you'll have plenty of support.
Not a bad one.
No, not at all.
Nope.
Anything else related to appointments?
Do you need a motion, is that what we're going to do?
Later on, under deliberations, that's filled in, yep. That was one of our changes, so I have that written down. Moving on then to our board goals, I passed out a draft of things relating to some possible goals of the board. I kind of based it primarily on the deliverables that this board has to produce for our statutory requirements such as building a budget, approving contracts, you know, what else? Policy updates, things like that. So, this is more of a starting point of, of the goals that we want to do. I don't want to have too many of them, because it kind of, it starts to get unruly, but if you, if there's things that you see that aren't here or maybe, and this was just top of mind at this point, wanted to get the kind of discussion going. And maybe you can just highlight those, just so, so they're in the record, yeah.
Do you want me to read it out?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Hollis School District Board Goals for FY '20, that's 2019, 2020. All board operational appointments made and approved by June. New board members attend the New Hampshire School Board Association orientation, build the FY '21 budget, to Budcom's guidance targets by February public hearing, form SAU 41 Forland Lane Site Plan Committee with committee charter by June, prepare comprehensive SAU 41 Forland Lane Site Plan, and final phase of H-step, cost versus scope, with funding options by December of 2019, complete district evaluation of superintendent by February 2020, meet all timelines, hearings, and statutory requirements for district meeting for March 2020, and district participation on updating SAU strategic plan.
Yeah, so, the times or have it by may change a little bit, I just kind of roughly thought, well, we should have it by this. I, I may have missed something and said, hey, we might need another month or, or that's too late for a certain requirement. So, all this is not written in stone. Again, please take a look at them, think about them a little bit, and what I'd like to do is for June, kind of nail these down, because we're going to use these by next March to kind of make sure that we're evaluating our own performance and making sure that we're doing the work that we're said we were going to do, that we have to do. And a lot of times, it's a good reminder in March, because we can highlight some of the work that we did to the community when they're sitting there, so. So, that's kind of, we try to do this every, every year too and set up goals, so. Any other questions or concerns or comments? Okay.
Well, I guess I really do want to ask something.
Yes.
And that is, there are a lot of other things this board does.
Yep.
We've taken information from the staff about academics, about standardized testing, about special ed, all kinds of things that, you know, don't automatically fit into these items. And some of them are weighing on my mind and, but they don't kind of fit in this sort of action item list.
Okay.
So, how would you propose or recommend that those things that, that board members want to, to focus a little attention on or have requests for, whatever?
I would say, take, take this month, between now and June, think about things that you might want to spearhead or maybe initiatives you're thinking about. We should spend time thinking and talking about it in deliberation and if the board, if you convince the rest of the board, then it becomes our initiative and we go ahead and move on it. Of course, our superintendent needs a big piece of that discussion as well, because we don't want all the, like, yeah, we want to do all this great stuff and say, Andy, you do it all, right? So, that's not, that's not what we're doing. So, we want to be a little careful about some of the things that we do, but let's have the conversation. If you don't see something, and particularly if it's education, you know, involved with, with educating and things like that, that's why I made sure I wanted to put that strategic plan there, because it's very high-level, but it cover, it can cover a ton of different stuff. And I know this is maybe, and it may be things that align to some of the work that you're planning on doing, I don't know yet.
Right. I think the other piece for the new board members, in June, you'll receive an end-of-year presentation from the two principals and their assistants will be here. And they will cover all the educational goals that are tied back to the strategic plan. Then we will take time to talk about that, to give you some ideas and directions where they're heading, so it gives you an idea of, okay, this is what we've covered, this is where we're heading, and you have an opportunity to say, well, I'd like you to look at this. You know, and that encompasses hard data, soft data, programs that we start.
Yes.
All of those type of things, extracurricular pieces, because the six goals of the strategic plan are very general by design. So, everything will encompass under them. So, that gives you that opportunity. And then what will happen in September is we kick off the year and say, this is what we talked about, this is where we're heading. So, you have your board goals, which I'll call a much more to kind of almost the business side of the district, and the principals are going to pick up the educational side of the district and those are going to be melded together.
Yeah.
And you, over the course of the year, are going to get a variety. Some months, it's going to be like you're going to be focusing on the business side of it and other months, you know, Candy and Paul are going to be here doing data presentations on NWEA, state testing, our special ed services and things of that nature.
Yeah, I, and that's a good clarification on that, Andy, because what we find in any cycle of our June update from our, from our teachers and administrators and so forth, is that we find the board aligning to some of the initiatives they're working on. There may be even some committee work that is generated by some of the things that they bring to us and then that we align with them. So, in many ways, you know, that whole educational piece in conversation, we enter into the conversation and decide, you know, and align, so that's the, that's how we, how we kind of do it.
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm attending a school recycling conference at the end of May. When would be a good time, if there's stuff to report back to the board? Would I do that in the past or do that?
I think any of those type of things that if you wanted to, you know, inform the board on, by all means, so we, about two weeks prior to our meeting, we usually start passing a draft agenda. So, as soon as you know what you would like to talk about, shoot me an email and saying, boy, I'd like to get it on the agenda. It's kind of tough if you send it to me the night before the meeting, because it's, we already said it a week ago or more. So, I mean, as soon as you know what you want to do...
The date is for, it's the 21st of May, so...
Yeah, shoot, shoot me an email, just so I have a paper trail and I can act on it. And then when we talk about it, I can say, hey, I have some stuff from the membership that they want, may want to talk about. We'll look at that, it doesn't guarantee that you're going to get on the agenda, but a lot has to do with timing and the type of things that we're, have to address. If we can get it on, we'll get it on, but sometimes there's like, oh, but we're going to talk about something that's very related next month when we have this additional data and that, so what you're requesting is going to enhance the conversation. So, there could be times where we run up against that where, I mean, I'll let you know, it won't be a surprise that, hey, you know, we need to kind of move it around, but it'll get on an agenda and I'll let, I'll just let you know. It's rare, but it, but it does happen, so. So, that's how we can, that's how I would ask any member who's interested in getting something on the agenda, by all means, use that mode and we'll do it weekend to get you a bullet item here. All right? All right, if that's all we have, revenue and expense update?
So, the revenue expense that was in your packet was as of 4/24, so basically two weeks ago. And not much has changed, other than as each month progresses towards the end of the year, it's going to get even more fine-tuned in terms of our incumbents shrink down and we now will know whether or not we're going to truly need it. And therefore, you'll see that the less retained fund at the very bottom will slightly get higher or potentially lower, depending on what is actually going on. As I had mentioned last time, traditionally, that's 152,000 that you guys have normally put towards that less retained fund. One of the things that you may want to discuss as a board is under that, building improvements, the unexpected heat controller repair of the 28,000, potentially moving that to the maintenance trust, to then be able to either increase your less retained fund or potentially give something back to the taxpayers.
Yes.
But again, that's something to discuss as a board.
And I know in many ways, that's usually the recommended approach from the Budget Committee, particularly if something is broken and has to be replaced, usually that... Usually, that very logically falls into that maintenance trust.
Correct, that is why it was.
We would, you know, we're happy to take those recommendations when it's time to take an action.
But aside from that, are there any specific questions concerning it?
I have a question on the unfilled power positions. It's kind of more of a general question, but, so those are paras not assigned to particular, like, specific special ed students? And I was just wondering, is that correct or no?
Well, yes, because if you have an assigned one-on-one in your IP.
Right.
And I'm a para, and Tammy's a para, and Tammy decides to move on, and she was a one-on-one, our first priority is we have to move an unassigned para to that one-on-one role.
Right.
Now, they might move back once we make the hire. A lot of these is that transition period, because in other years, we would have a fallback list to go to. This year, it's more advertising and looking for people.
Right.
So those are the, you know, two weeks here, three weeks there, but it does add up.
So my question was, do we ever add a para to a classroom based on class size? So in other words, if there is no children in a class where their IP says that they need a para professional, do we ever say, well, there's 25 kids, or whatever, in this class, let's give this person an extra set of hands?
We have that option if we get to ed specs. So let's say all of a sudden, we were at 22 kids in a classroom. I may say to you that 22 as a board is not terrible, it's not the ideal, and rather than go out and separate classes again, because of what time of year it is, because kids have already formed relationships with teachers and things like that, I'll say, let's use a para. So now what we've done is, we have two adults in that room, and basically reducing the ratio down, not from a teaching direct instruction point of view, but the other set of eyes, the other set of hands, which is critical.
That happened when this current sixth grade was in second grade. In August, we were right nicely within our ed specs for five sections. And by November, we're bursting at the seams. And by December, we had blown, I mean, the kids just kept spilling into second grade move-ins, and there wasn't time to hire, it was totally unpredictable. And there wasn't time to hire and establish a new classroom. So we did add a para for that. And the para helped those teachers, you know, muddle through the rest of the season and then, the rest of the school year. And then the following school year, we hired that sixth person for their third grade iteration, and the sixth, a sixth has been with them all the way through this year, sixth grade, and they matriculate up to the middle school in June, which is part of the staff management changes that are happening. As I recall that line last month, when I asked, I was told it was because there was a, there was a student-based, you know, change that we didn't need the extra paras.
Correct.
Yeah, this is based on a student.
So if Andy Corey has a one-on-one para, and my family moves out of the district, we no longer need that para. We would end that relationship with them. If we had an open para position, obviously, we simply backfill.
Anything else?
Bus route credits.
Pardon?
Bus route credits.
Oh, yes.
That's my favorite, is bus route credits.
So I did, I did inspect that, and Hollis is the only one that is actually getting the bus route credit.
Oh.
And it is part, it is built.
$3,000 is a lot of dough.
It is built into the monthly.
It's, right. Bus route credits, where is it? Is it the end of one of those pink things? Third pink line from the bottom under expenses. Gasoline less than expected and bus route credits, 23 grand.
23 grand, which I had added the amount because you were looking for it. It is a lot of money, so.
And the season, this year isn't over yet.
Is that real money, or is that applied to?
It's applied to their.
Future charges?
No. So we were given an original quote at the beginning of the year, that quote then, or amount, then gets divided up by 10 months, because Hollis Transportation likes to be paid, and 10 equal months throughout the school year. Once they determined that they needed to cut a couple routes, they then gave us a new amount that got then divided by 10. So that actually got built into what we budgeted for versus what they're actually charging us.
So the credits themselves come right off the bottom line? Or does it get built into the new 10-month number?
It got built into the new 10-month number.
All right. So it's essentially 23,000 less in the aggregate?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Then I also have a question about, well, I really spent some time with Kelly on this, and we're going to go over that thing about the utilities, so never mind about The heat controller expense that we didn't expect. So that's in place, and it's been here now a couple months.
Correct.
And it's working fine. And there's training, so staff is chucking them, or have learned how to use it and optimize it and stuff. Because when this project, when the energy project started, one of the big things that our consultants identified is the inefficiencies of running with the old system. It was not possible to fine tune what we were doing, and I'm hoping that this will, over time, pay for itself in cost savings, because we don't run this, you know, blast this and blast that.
Anything else on the expense report? And we'll go ahead and move on. Thanks very much for that.
What you have in your packet is, I'll call it, a few drafts for us at the SAU, but the first public draft, trying to look at a way to start capturing H-Step in a readable form that we can present on a quarterly basis to the school board and the Budget Committee in the future. What we're looking at is, we're excited about our usage, but what we've found is that we've had some issues with demand charges, because obviously, as the usage has gone down, energy companies still want to make the same money, so they're going to demand charges. So we've been working closely with our Energy Committee in town. We purchased two devices, $1,200 apiece, and they are connected to our electrical boxes that allow us to determine the time of the spike, and eventually, even what caused the spike. I can give you one. We had a hot water heater that was turning on at various times. And when it would turn on during, when we were close to peak, that would put us over. And that demand charge was significant. And it's kind of getting, you have to remember, we're in 1950s building here, and up, the hill is a little newer, but not that new. So there are a lot of still quirkiness, and I want to publicly thank the Energy Committee, because they've been in, and they're breaking this down so that we can hopefully end these demand charges and look at different ways to see them. But just from a usage point of view, you know, we used 196, 219 kilowatts to date, you know, we're projecting that to come down to 160 and stay the same. You know, we're seeing the same trends under our oil at HPS. Hues has come down, to give you the idea, our 10-year kilowatt average at Hughes has been 567,383. We're down to 400. So we're seeing some reduction in usage, 42%, 35%, and 30% in those areas. One of the things that is not controllable is necessarily the price, you know, those price spikes. But, so with the Budget Committee, we decided our goal would be to focus on usage, because at least that's something we can control. And one of the reasons we're doing the, I'll say, stage two of the facility study, is because we didn't get to things like the lights here. And the lighting in both buildings, as you can imagine, is one of our highest usage going, and by changing the lights, we'll be able to take better advantage of the solar and probably reduce those costs significantly as well. We work with Dick Henry. For those of you who don't know, Dick has been with us since moment one of the H-Step project. His specialty is energy, and he has been very intrigued by this project, one, as a contracted service, but two, it's his passion. And he really is excited to continue to work with us, and he's come back on board for Phase Two. Down where it says heating degree days per year, if you were to divide those numbers by 24 hours, you would come up with approximately 205 days a year of heating days for us. Where for some portion of the day, the heat is on.
Interesting.
You know? So that's another calculation that Dick is looking at to determine, how can we better regulate that? And there's a multiplier for that, if you go into what I'll call an extended cold spell, because then you're running the heat just like at home, probably for 24 hours, and it's kicking on all the time. So we have a lot of work to go on, but we're excited about the, we were able to finally, you know, provide our 10-year averages, so we can calculate over the long haul, year-to-year comparisons. And the other, the cautionary piece of this is that we only had the solar panels and this done for approximately six months.
For 2018.
Yeah, for 2018. So we're looking to really start to see what the next set of numbers look like, and where do we go from there? But it's already promoted to discussion. If you're not aware, the high school is the largest user of electricity, obviously, in the area. So we're also using a lot of this data to start to look at other buildings and solar arrays, because there's that potential as well. And then when you factor in the quality of the environment for students, there's.
Very, very significant.
Yeah, it's not a dollar amount, but it's a definite value for teachers and students, because they're not getting the drafts, they're not getting the, one classroom is 85, and the other classroom is 45.
Yes.
You know, go get your jackets before you come to Mr. Corey's room, all of those old fun things. But as we go into Phase Two of the facilities project, it's also looking at what other enhancements do we need to do here in a Hughes that provide us with decades more use of these buildings? Because it wasn't just about changing the heating. We actually allowed these buildings probably to get two, three decades, because of changing the outside walls and doing everything we've done, the electrical and all those internal pieces.
Yeah.
You know, we still have areas like the kitchen that will be reviewed, because those are older freezers. So they're just sucking up the energy as compared to what you would potentially purchase today. So we're going to continue to work with Dick to fine tune this, and eventually, we're going to arrive at one report that's kind of going to become the standard for the board report every quarter, just so we can track it.
Are we getting any input from Budget Committee in terms of how we're moving forward with the structure of this report, just so we?
Well, they haven't seen this yet. They asked for a report that was based in units of consumables, not dollars.
Yes.
Because you can't control rates. You can't control things like these demand charges. And you can't really study before and after, if you look at bills from 2016 and bills from 2019, with the multiple facets that complicated. But you can, and Dick did this with Kristen, they went and just did the math, they got bills out, and they added up all the kilowatt hours, and you can see that the project was dramatically successful. At the primary school, electric usage dropped, dropped 42%. This is kilowatt hours, not dollars. So this is a preliminary report, as Andy was telling me before the meeting started. He wanted to bring something to us to look at, and to start the questions about format. You know, the first thing I see here is, as I look at this, is that the leading edge of it talks about what savings were predicted by one person versus savings that were predicted by another person, before we had very many actuals at all. Now we have these actuals, and what we're seeing is huge savings in the actual consumables, but the dollars are confusing looking. I think one of the elements we must include in this table is this, and I'll see if I can articulate it, because it's hard for me to get the words right. But what I want to see is this, if we're assuming, for example, on that first line, 15.5 cents per kilowatt hour. On the third column from the right, from the end of this, okay, the assumed cost per gallon or kilowatt hour, that's, yes, that's electric. So I'd like to take that number, and I'd like to multiply it times the kilowatt hours we actually used before the project, the year of 2017, before anything started, before anything was mounted on these buildings. And then multiply it times the kilowatt hours that were actual for 2019, which are 42% less, because that's the real savings. But it also tells us that if we had not made any changes, that's what we would be spending today. We would not be spending that rate on the hours.
What we paid two years ago, three years ago.
What would we have paid if we hadn't changed anything? What would be?
I think that's really important.
And I think those dollars accrued over the, so the way we paid for H-Step is, if you remember, is that we bought into a 10-year municipal lease purchase, which is a kind of reorganized type of bond. And I'd like to see what that opportunity cost, 10, times 10, over the period of that bond, would have cost us, if all we'd done is replaced a few boilers, left the crappy windows the way they were, left the garbage insulation the way it was, left everything the way it was, and just replaced some rusty boilers. Apply that rate to the amount, the number of kilowatts and gallons, et cetera, that we would have, and then apply it to the number of kilowatts and gallons that we now know we will be spending, at least based on current billings. And I think that will not tell the tale of extending the longevity of these buildings by generations, easily two generations, or a long generation. It says nothing about the value we've added with natural light flooding the rooms, with temperature controls. You know, before the project started. The room, the classroom on the other side of the front doors had a thermometer, a metric, a meter going on, and then a different classroom elsewhere, where teachers were complaining it was too hot or too cold. This is October, it was freezing outside, it was 90 degrees in one classroom, and it was 57 degrees in the other classroom, because Chuck couldn't control the building's heat sources any better than that. So we have a 90-degree classroom with the windows open. And in the meantime, there's so many other efficiencies that were added through the project, that had we not added them, we would not be saving all this energy. And there's just something unacceptable about simply replacing the boilers and having the heat, the air be heated over there, and vented through the building to heat the building, and then vented out completely. So if we changed nothing, we'd have spent less, but it's an unacceptable outcome. And those things have to be articulated, they have to be quantified where we can.
I really like the always kind of baselining against the pre-renovation consumables and what we've consumed. And I really like the idea of adding, this is, if we didn't do any of this, this is what we would pay today, in today's dollars. That's a very good, you know, apples to apples comparison, that I think people who in the community that haven't been close to H-Step, that doesn't know all the nuances about it, can go right to that, those two columns, and see very clearly and easily what the differences are. So I think this is something that we definitely want to continue to refine and use as best practice going forward. And just from a consumable standpoint, for anyone in the community to look and see, this is what we do in a year, and this is what we used to do before we did all this. And this is the monies we spend to do it. And, you know, consumables, going from a standpoint of consumption, really, it makes the most sense, because then you can, you can port it to any economic price situation you want. So I'm looking to hear more from other ideas from other stakeholders, and how we go about refining this, so please update us.
I just wanted to say, because we have two new board members, that so far, this project, from the very outset, one of the very most potent driving factors in it was the savings estimates. We didn't have all these billing numbers done, because it just wasn't available in the time, it just didn't have, we didn't have that ability yet. There was a great deal of high-end math and lots of very technical consultants to try to figure out what savings we should expect from the project, if we did this, if we did this, if we did this. And some of that is what you see in the front two columns. And we need to change the paradigm from what we said would be saved, based on our very best, most educated guess, but there was still a lot of guessing, because that was all the options. Now we've had a year and a half of actuals. Every month, we add another actual. And, you know, for example, if you look at the kilowatts between 2016 and 2017, there's 288,000 versus 293,000. You can tell which year was colder. It was 2017, we used a lot more kilowatts. So, or a lot more gallons, it tells you that that was a colder year. So those variations, we can't affect at all.
But you can correlate it to the temperatures and stuff.
But as we get, month over month, over month, year over year, as we get actuals. I want to switch the boards, the staffs, the budget committees, and the public's questions about the project, from, you said it would save this one year, and you said the next year, as you worked the numbers more, would save that. Let's move it to, what are we actually saving? Now that we're accruing real usage numbers, let's shift our discussion from the best that we could do two years ago, because we got that municipal lease purchase in 2016, and didn't finish the project for two years.
To Andy's point, this practice is going to help estimate other projects down the road.
Right, right, right. But now that we have actuals.
Because we were going in there.
But now that we have actuals-
Because we were going in very green at the beginning and doing our best and, and trying to quantify a very complicated-
Absolutely.
-system. All right, let's move on. I believe we're done with our discussion segment and moving into deliberations. So I believe we want to add the, those appointments and just get those approved through the board, so I'm going to kind of wing the verbiage here, see what action the board will take regarding the chairman's appointments for the coming year.
Of course she is, she always has. Dawn has everything.
Go ahead.
Hang on, oh, that's the federal assurances, hang on, board goals, where'd she go? Have we moved, right? We moved our-
No, this wasn't all that, so we-
Oh, I see, we're just making it up, that's why.
Rob will work.
All right, well, Rob will work, then, never mind. Because I thought she'd written something.
So that's okay with everyone? I'll take a second on that?
[laughing].
Okay. And we, since we already kind of discussed it, I'll just, is there any additional discussion relating to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Five, zero, zero. To see what action the board will take regarding the formation of a Feasible Study Committee for the SAU Office and Barn, as well as the other capital improvements items defined by the committee.
I move, you want deliberations? You want a motion, right?
Yeah, she must have.
Yeah, all right.
Just a question on the motion, though. Do we, I mean, we discussed it. Do we really need a motion and an action? Because we're not actually necessarily formulating what, what we talked about is creating a draft charter.
Right, but, but you're, you're forming the Feasibility Study Committee to empower them to do the charter to bring to you, which was a board-
Ah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, right?
Yeah.
All right, yes, thanks for the clarification. Got a little bit of them there.
Yep, page two, she said.
You couldn't read it?
You read it, just a second.
Motion to form a feasibility study committee for the SAU Offices and Barn, as well as other capital improvement items identified by the committee.
Look at you.
It's right in front of me.
Look at you. We'll take a second on that.
Amy.
A second.
Any discussion on that?
So again, once we, you intend to bring a recommendation to the board for, you want to finalize that, the membership of it?
Yeah, I mean, I think we have to go ahead and then formalize the, the membership and the structure of it, but I think this action starts that process.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? To see what action the board will take regarding the, the board, the board chair of signing the federal assurance program, which mandates the, the board to have reviewed and requirement-
Well, she, this, this one, Dawn has a very big, long motion here, so-
Go for it.
It says, "To authorize the board chairman to represent the school board and acknowledge that the superintendent has consulted with all members of the school board in furtherance of the school board's obligations, including those enumerated in RSA 189:1-A, and pursuant to the school board's oversight of federal funds, the district will be receiving and the general assurances, requirements, and definitions for participation in said federal programs." So that's what, the motion that Dawn provided for us. So it needs a second.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Amy, were you the second?
Yes, I was.
So, Andy, maybe you can kind of summarize this, because it is, there's a lot to think about.
What, what this does, it allows Rob to sign saying two things. One, that we discussed it at a board meeting, and we gave out the assurances, which we did last month, and, and tonight. And then our federal grants are the IDEA, which is special education, Title II, which is, can be used for class size reduction or professional development, Title IV, which is technology, and food service. Those are our four major pieces. All of those go through a process as the SAU that is very regimented. The assurances that Rob is signing, and that I sign as well, say this is the pieces that we will do to comply with all federal regulations around gender, anything you can think of in terms of the federal laws. Gina oversees Title II and Title IV. Amy oversees IDEA, and Amy Cassidy, our food service director for the SAU oversees the, the food service money that comes in through free and reduced lunches. Each of those are required and reviewed during our monthly audits. So there's a very lengthy procedure and safeguards in place. Two years, until two years ago, board chairs didn't have to sign off, it didn't have to be discussed, it was my signature, based on my license. The new commissioner decided that he wanted school boards to be aware. One of the problems a year ago was that the wording was different, and a board chair didn't have the, really oversight to make sure it was happening. So to say that was kind of very difficult to put your signature on, something you couldn't guarantee. This says, we've discussed it, I understand what Andy's supposed to be doing, I understand what Gina's supposed to be doing, Kelly's supposed to be doing, and Amy's supposed to be doing, and we will comply with those, and then they're reviewed as power of our annual audit.
Yeah, I think that, that was a sticking point for the chairman's last time.
Very good.
Because it, it made it look like we're, we're actually accountable to, to over, not overseeing, but to ensure execution. And, and we're like, we don't have that level of operation, operational insight, and we didn't feel that that was really appropriate for us to sign. So I think in this, in this way, it makes, it empowers the chair to sign for the board that we know about it and we've talked about it, but execution and procedure lies with, with the superintendent and his staff. Okay, well, that was a good summary, that helped me too, because it reminded me what happened a year and a half ago when we did this. Okay, so any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Okay. Andy, okay, to see what action the board will take regarding the policy memo submitted by the Policy Committee.
So I move to accept the third reading and adopt Policy CFB Building Principal Evaluation.
Second.
Discussion on that. Seeing none, all in favor? Five, zero, zero.
To accept the second reading of Policy AC Non-Discrimination.
Second.
Will we be moving this to third reading?
Well, that's discussion. So I'd like to waive the third reading on this. This has to do with equal opportunity, and I don't see any reason to, you know, there were just a few additions to-
I, I wondered when I was, was the gender identity added the last reading?
Yes.
So I was trying to reflect on if there were any other statuses that might need protection. And so I thought of one that could be discussed would be immigration status. So I just wanted to bring that, bring that forward.
That's a good point.
Then my thought would be, pass it for second reading only, refer that question back to policy, and then when we bring it for third reading, you would have your answer, or it would be included in the policy.
Yeah, we might even need to take that and get a legal opinion on it.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's a great question.
That's good, good catch. Anything else?
Well, then I will not amend it, it'd be third and wait.
As you remarked, okay. All right, then, all in favor, the motion?
Accepting the second reading?
Yeah, except-
Only, yeah. Five, zero, zero.
So it'll be the same for the next one. Policy GBA, to accept the second reading of Policy GBA Equal Opportunity Employment.
Second.
Same, yeah, same comment.
Okay. So, that's why we have multiple readings.
So I have a question for Brooke. Brooke, are you suggesting, or asking, or wanting to study adding immigration status to that language, right?
Yes.
So the idea would be that we have, we are an equal opportunity employer regardless of immigration status? If, if I just extract the other items on that list and just focus on that?
Regardless of immigration status, I don't know, I just, I was bringing it forward for discussion, I don't-
Right, I understand, that's why I'm asking, you know, I am just struggling with my computer today, I'm not finding the things I want to find, where the heck is it? Can I get control find on this?
What I could find is that it is considered a protected status, so.
A protected status?
I think, I agree with Rob, I would, I would plan to touch base on legal, because I think there are two different pieces.
Yep.
Obviously, in one situation, you know, we're going to provide an education to a student.
Right, and that's why I wanted to do employment.
The other piece, the employment piece, that, that would fall back to your I-9 in your documentation. So I, I think it's a great question for both, but I think it may be two different answers.
Because, you know, technically, there it is, finally. Technically, you could argue that a person whose immigration status is a non-citizen and a non-green card is out of district tuition. I mean, it can get funny, it's just got some funny twists to it.
That's an interesting point.
But the, the question would be, I believe there's, and I don't know it off the top of my head, I have to look it up, I believe there's federal-
Prohibition.
Protections for students.
That's interesting, hopefully they're still in place. Okay, great. We accept the second reading then?
Right. Yeah, okay. Any other conversation, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Sorry, I was pushing forward.
No. I was just thinking of the, all the legal twists and turns around that. There's a lot, there's a lot to it.
I just, I felt like it is-
No, I think it's a great call out.
On the, on Policy JFAB, I move to amend number four under Section Two, so that the last sentence reads, "Tuition charges will be waived at the sole discretion of the whole school board if residence is established by October 1 of the same school year in which the child is enrolled, and accept the first reading of Policy JFAB Admission of Tuition and Non-Resident Students as amended."
Second.
Okay, discussion?
The crossed off portion in number four, is that what you're proposing, to get rid of, to add?
Right, and replace by this language.
And I think, and you can correct me, this is around the reporting, right? Certain things have to be reported, and this kind of 60 days within makes it very difficult for them to basically report on it, so by having a hard and fast date of October 1st, it makes the reporting easier, is that?
Yes, it's, our funding is based on average daily membership, and our recording date is October 1st. So by making it October 1st, it's when we file with the state, which means that sets our tuition for the year, basically unless a student moves in and out of district. So this is just a, a procedural thing that'll make life a lot easier. It doesn't mean that a family who has a lease or purchase and sale is going to take a little more time for that, we just need to know from them are they committed to attending.
Gotcha. Thank you for clarifying the October 1 choice, because it's not 60 days from the beginning of the year, so I wasn't sure for the truncating for good reason, thank you.
And it looks like it gives the, the board the discretion to waive, so, you know, based on case-by-case situations, so, okay.
On the number six, other situations, that could, that's sort of like, I don't know, a blanket statement of allowing the district to do admission of non-resident students for other reasons. Would that clause cover if the district had an interest in increasing the socioeconomic diversity in, in district, or racial diversity in district? Would that cover, would that be, would that, would this be an avenue, the way it's currently written, for that to occur?
I, I wouldn't say that was why it was written, but I think what it would do is, if, if all of a sudden we had spaces that were available in grades-
Yes.
This would allow the district the ability to kind of, I'll say advertise, for lack of a better word.
Open up some space.
And then we would probably, like, we do have, you could apply at the co-op, so parents do an application and the whole thing, in some cases, for out-of-district tuitions. We haven't gone there, because our enrollment has always been pretty packed, but if enrollment went and decreased, the board may want to consider that as a, a revenue source, and then criteria for how selection is determined.
I think the important thing is it gives the latitude to, reserves the right to, to allow or deny.
Right.
It could be, I, I guess it says that could be a whole host of reasons for or against.
We've been, we've exercised that clause a couple times over the few years that I've been on it. Those things are decided in the non-public, to protect student confidentiality, so that would be why you might not be aware.
Be aware.
Yeah. Any more discussion on JFAB? Are we doing these all in grouped, or are we doing these separate?
It's got separate, their policies are different.
Okay. Seeing none, all in favor, JFAB?
As amended.
As amended, yeah. Okay, five, zero, zero.
Policy ADB GBEC Drug-Free Workplace. Move to amend Policy ADB/GBEC Drug-Free Workplace in its entirety by replacing it with the copy provided with the agenda, and accept the first reading as amended.
Discussion.
What is the purpose of the file?
So this one, basically some regulations came out, and we get kind of a statement from the New Hampshire School Board, a big kind of do-it-the-Boiler-Play template, and they took the opportunity, when some of this new legislation came out, to not only just add in the new legislation, but to kind of revise the whole policy, just to make it more clear. So on this one, it looked, the substance of it didn't really change, aside from, they added the definition of a controlled substance, they added a definition of the workplace, and they also included, you know, unlawfully manufacturing, distributing, possessing, using, including employees possessing medical marijuana card. So those are kind of the main, the main changes under that first section. Then in addition, they clarified, I guess, the dates under Section B, the district action upon violation of the policy recommending 30 days, the board would take disciplinary action within 30 days or receiving notice of conviction, and then also they defined the drug-free school zone. So it looks like it's supposedly-
Isn't vaping in here too?
Yes.
So I mean, there's also some updates of other things that, that people, just modernizing it.
Right. I think that's more in the tobacco.
The tobacco one, yeah. That's right, that's right.
That's the next one.
Yeah, that's good.
Any other conversation or comments, questions?
Thanks for clarifying.
Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Five, zero, zero.
So, Policy ADC, yeah, first reading.
Moving to second.
These are all, these are all first readings. Tobacco, ADC Tobacco Products Ban Use of Tobacco Products Strictly Prohibited in and on all school facilities and grounds. I move to amend Policy ADC in its entirety by replacing it with a copy of Policy ADC/GBEV Tobacco Products Ban Use and Possession in and on school facilities and grounds, provided with the agenda, and accept the first reading as amended.
Discussion.
So in this one, it's a little easier to see the changes, because we just blacklined it, but again, they added e-cigarettes and liquid nicotine to the definition of tobacco products throughout.
And their definition of e-cigarette is specifically when it is nicotine? Because this would, by my assumption, include vaping pens, the jewels, things like that. So this is going to be a conversation for this particular policy. Yeah.
The one thing to keep in mind is that it's unlikely we'll see anything major in our district, because we don't oversee the co-op.
I know.
Yeah, yeah. So a controlled substance was defined in the previous policy, because of course, we had an incident already this year with a very severe problem that happened at the high school. But that was a controlled substance, it wasn't tobacco, this is freedom, nicotine.
But I will say that, so this is applicable to school grounds, and it is applicable in carpool.
And to, and to the staff, too, it's not just kids.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Oh, wow. Yeah, so it's, you're in a school zone, so-
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Pracking lots, all of it.
So you're saying people under this cannot have cigarettes in their car on school property?
Yeah.
Because they-
Could be using them.
They can't be using, or they can't be in possession of it.
Well, if you read this, though, but it's talking about possession of the products. It's not just talking about the use, the, the title of this is use and possession.
Right.
How is that enforceable?
You can have it in your car, but, well-
Right.
Well, for example, if you're, if, what if somebody locks their keys in the car and the police come to help, or whoever comes to help, and they discover this product, or a staff member assists with opening a car, or whatever, carrying something and sees it. So I'm a, I'm a teacher, and I'm helping my fellow teacher put something in their car- So I'm a, I'm a teacher, and I'm helping my fellow teacher put something in their car, and I see something that's forbidden by this policy, we have to report it. What's the scoop?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm a little.
I don't know about the possession side of it, because tobacco products are not illegal.
Right.
But this says you can't have them.
Well, so, but it, it, the title does, the title says possession, but if you read the language of it, it says it's use.
Right, but there's a clear distinction, if you read it. It talks about school vehicle, that we own the vehicle, not your vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
So we own the vehicle, or anywhere on school grounds. So if you're in your vehicle, sitting on the property, that's a different scenario than if we own the vehicle.
Okay.
And if you look through, that's, that's the clarification. It's telling you.
There is a clarification. Okay, I need to.
It's a, under, letter D, all other persons. No visitor contract to enter or member of the public shell. Use any tobacco products, e-cigarettes, or liquid nicotine in any facility, so they can't use it in the building, which everybody understands. In any school vehicles, so on a bus or anything that we own, or anywhere on school grounds maintained by the district. When you're in your car on school property, you're not on school grounds.
What?
Oh, really?
Well, it's not, it's not an asset. It's not an asset of.
I mean, it's not something that.
You're in the parking lot over here in your car, and you're inside your car, so you're not technically on school grounds.
Well, you are from an, but not from an enforcement policy. We're not going out to your private vehicle and telling you what you can.
We can't, we can't have governance over private profit, property, right? So it's, I, so it's, it's not our asset, so I can see, that, that actually makes me feel better.
That's not how I would've read it. That's interesting.
Well, but it's no different than, like, I own a school locker at the high school. So I have every right to go into it anytime I want. Right? If I, if it's your backpack, I'm gonna request permission to search it.
You can't, a superintendent march in there and open a kid's locker?
I can open the locker.
Mm-hmm.
The backpack is their backpack.
Oh, the backpack, sure, sure.
No.
Oh, so you're saying the car is the same as the backpack's what you're saying? Okay, that makes sense.
I mean, anything else, to me, would create a big, like, loophole in problems, if that wasn't there.
So this is more of a curiosity than anything having to do with this policy. But if you're sitting in your car on school grounds, and you're smoking with the window down, and the smoke is coming out, does that change anything? Or because you're in your vehicle, even if the results of what you're doing are.
Mm-hmm. Cause if you, if you remember when people started to stop smoking, we had many teachers that smoked. So that's what they would use their break period was, they would have lunch in their car, they would, cause they were in their car. Cause they couldn't survive the six-hour school day. But that's their property.
Now, students not allowed to buy, right? We're not allowed to, they're not allowed to buy cigarettes or nicotine products under eighteen, I think, right?
But a student's so different because.
But they can have it, like.
No, they can't have it on them or anything.
They can't have tobacco on them in, anyway.
If they're under eighteen.
Right.
Even in their car.
Is, I'm, I'm sorry.
I'm curious, because, no, because the, the point that's being brought up is we're talking adults, staff, kids in cars with their parents.
Again, I think you're getting into the notion of, um, what's, what's in the car. I mean, we can, what, like, let's use the co-op where we bring the dogs in. We, we search the parking lots, we bring the drug dogs in, and if they hit on the car, we don't do anything. That's the police. There's a fine distinction between those pieces. I mean, I, I.
There shouldn't be.
So, no, no, but I'm asking you then, a sixteen-year-old's not allowed to smoke?
No.
Period. I see. I didn't, I would never.
So.
I don't give it any thought. Our families are so hard for that.
So if a sixteen-year-old has cigarettes in their purse or on their possession, we're gonna ask them. We've been informed that you have something you're not supposed to have. Do you have anything? If the answer's no, then my question is, will you empty your pockets and let me search you? If the answer's no, then we're gonna get the school resource officer.
So the policeman is the one who, the officer is the one who, who does any searching, warrants any of that? It's not the school, that's, you're making a distinction between who gets to actually touch the, the private property.
Right, well, at this point, a student has failed to comply with administrator's request. That's why it moves on to the other.
And the officer has to be. I see.
And then there's, there are whole other protocols and stuff that the police don't have.
Family has their share of problems. This isn't one. I'm pretty ignorant.
It's interesting.
Um, I don't think on either of these, um, herbal cigarettes are.
Well, I think it's explicit about nicotine, right?
I, I was wondering something similar. I was wondering if e, is e-cigarette a broad enough term? Because you, you see all these devices for vaping. I mean, I, early on, we used to call them e-cigarette, but now, you know, there's all kinds of terms and stuff, so.
Did this, did this language come from NHSBA?
It did.
Yeah.
So they have limited the definition of an e-cigarette to vapor of nicotine.
That's what they're, that's what this looks like to me.
Because, again, moving over to the co-op level, that, that in itself is enough to address the issue. And then if you've chosen not to have nicotine, well, now we have a different issue. Cause they're both illegal. So one starts me down a path. If it's nicotine, you still can be out for ten days. If it's now something else you decide to put in that, that's, that's a whole different discussion in consequences.
So is there a thought of not allowing the device, no matter what's in it?
We, we are, at, at the co-op level, specifically talk about vaping.
In any form.
But what Carol's asking, I think, is if you see the person with an empty vapor.
Not, I'm not trying.
No, I'm asking. You asked the question.
No, this is, these are interesting corner cases.
Is it forbidden, is the policy at the co-op the same as this one? Is it, are you looking at the same language?
The co-op is specifically adding, it has in drug paraphernalia and vaping.
So they have added language that.
They have a whole separate policy.
Expands, a whole separate policy.
Right. Because that, you know, that's where you, you tend to see it.
I, I understood, but this is gonna address staff, parents, uh, older siblings who come pick up kids, et cetera.
Well, not if they're in their car, as was established as that.
If you're an older sibling, and you're nineteen years old, coming to pick up my sibling.
No, sixteen years old, seventeen years old, you're still a minor.
Right, then you still can't have it.
Right, that's what, that's what I'm saying. If, do we need to have that para, the co-op's?
No, I don't think we do.
Policy instead, okay.
Because, remember, the, the only way a minor is picking up their sibling is because the parent's giving them permission. And we would deal with the parent if that situation came up.
Right, right. Interesting, oh. Okay, um.
Thank you. I think we have a party.
My pleasure.
Yeah, seeing, uh, okay, any other kind of questions or comments? Seeing none? All in favor?
KDCA, move to amend policy KDCA Information Distribution and Display in its entirety by replacing it with the copy provided with the agenda, and accept the first reading as amended.
Second. So as we've been kind of surfing through the policy, you've noticed, um, in several places, and the, the New Hampshire School Board actually also has a lot of duplicate, uh, policies. Um, so KHC Information Distribution and Display is a policy that we, um, reviewed previous, earlier in the year. We gave it its three readings, and we accepted it. But then upon further, I guess, investigation, KDCA is actually a required policy by the New Hampshire School Board Association called Information, Information Distribution and Display. So we're simply, basically replacing, uh, the verbiage in KHC, which we agreed upon earlier in the year, and moving it to KDCA, and then later on, you'll see, we're rescinding, uh, KHC.
So it's identical language, it's just changing the code letters and.
Correct, and getting rid of the one that's not, that's optional.
And Brooke and Carol, these code letters are a system established by the NHSBA, the School Board Association.
I think we've both read through all of them.
I'm just telling you what I come up with.
Why do they have, why are some of these, like, in two and three here, they have, they're slashed with?
So again, they're, they're duplicate, they're general policies. Yeah, and Gina and I kind of talked about, yeah.
So you gotta kind of, we're addressing both.
And I guess it's because they're, you know, one is general policies, and G is students, or something like that. So we have them in both places.
I got it. I see. Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Any other question, comments? Seeing none? All in favor?
GCPA Reduction in Staff. So I move to amend policy GCPA Reduction in Instructional Staff or Force in its entirety by replacing it with the copy provided with the agenda, and accept the first reading as amended.
Second.
Discussion.
Same scenario here?
So this one is basically because of the, Tammy, you may chime in here, the collective bargaining agreement that was, um, agreed on earlier.
So the policy that we have had in our policy manual since nineteen oh three refers for the Hollis School District to kindergarten through grade twelve.
Right.
Um, it's so old that it was part of the Hollis Area School District. And over the years, it never got amended. And it's referenced in, in RIF policy, in reduction in force, not, language, I mean, in our contracts. And it, there are lots of things that simply do not apply. And we've been working for many years now, this is our fifth year, fourth, fourth year, uh, updating our policy manual, going just methodically with a giant database, um, to try to clean out, clean our attic, as it were. So this, this language is current, it, it's current to the current seat, uh, collective bargaining agreements that were just passed in March, and replaces language that's defunct.
How, so if we have a ratified contract, and that contract cites this policy, uh, and if we ever wanna go, so, so they're coupled, right? We can't go into that policy and make changes within that.
We can in the, in the following fashion. The pol, the, both contracts require us to get approval from the bargaining units before we can make changes to them. So it's not.
Is it considered a sidebar?
Uh, it's, no, we are attaching it. We're pinning it to the contracts. We're.
But from a change standpoint, it would be a sidebar agreement.
It would be a sidebar to alter the policy and then cite it.
Oh, we altered the policy, yes.
If next year, you were going to make changes, you would have to go to the union, cause it's a negotiated item.
Yes.
But this one is so much better than what we had in place. Because, let me give you an example. In the old language, if the last person in was a para educator, and we had to reduce in that bargaining unit, that might've had a custodian becoming the para. And the para being reduced, because the language was specific. This now separates us into custodians, para professionals, teachers, part-time teachers. So there's a set process, so we as a board know who would be reducing in force. And the union employee could figure out, you know, based on the last in, uh, potential. Now, we also have language in the CBA that takes into account an employee's evaluation process. So it's not just strictly seniority. So this kind of really cleans it up, um, and makes it well-defined.
So you call it a sidebar if, that's how, that's a term you would be willing to use to talk about if we ever had to change it in the middle of a bargaining agreement?
Correct. We have, we have to approach it.
Yeah, I think you can see if it's cou, this, this is kind of specialized, and, and you can almost see why previous boards may have gotten way out of sync here, because generally, you're happy that you got a, a contract, and you're in several years, and you're not really thinking about, from the standpoint of policy. And there was a time where our policy handbook was way out of date, just generally.
We're still working on things from the two thousands and two thousands.
Yeah, so, you know, things get way out of sync.
So the other thing about those contract negotiations is sometimes you end up with no contract agreement, and you're just rolling over the current one. Sometimes you only agree on a single year for a variety of reasons. Sometimes, like this time, we're in a three-year contract, and it can get out of sync with the policy changes you wanna make. It's real, this is kind of, this has been a real hitch in the giddy-up kind of thing, so this, this is the best solution we were able to find.
And sometimes a policy committee would look at it and say, oh, that's, needs to be negotiated. We'll have to wait until next cycle. And then it, it gets forgotten. So there's a lot of reasons why it can get out of sync. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none? All in favor? Five, zero, zero. Or rescinding?
And then KHC Information Distribution, no, yeah, Distribution Display. I move to rescind policy KHC Information Distribution and Display.
Second.
Discussion.
So as previously stated, we're basically just rescinding this one and replacing the, um, the verbiage in KHC.
All in favor? Five, zero, zero. Do we need a non-public term?
Yes, we do.
We do?
Yes, we do.
So I'll take a motion to go into non-public?
I move that the board by roll call go into non-public session pursuant to RSA ninety-one dash A colon three two parentheses A, the dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employee. And RSA ninety-one dash A colon three two parentheses C, to discuss a matter which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of a person other than a member of the body or agency itself.
Second?
A seconded.
Okay, roll call up, vote please.
Yay.
Say your name.
Get to say your name.
Carol Roy, yay.
Carol.
I mean, Carol's the, you know.
Let's see, it might be part of my bed.
We're taking over the side of the table.
Brooke Carter, yay.
Amy, I.
Rob, I.
Camille.
And Paula's office is open. We will not be.
We will not be coming back. We will be adjourning immediately after a non-public vote, so you will not be missing any business. Thank you.